Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The July 11th, 2023 Committee of the Whole, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman Natariano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer? Mr. Chairman, the quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll accept a motion to approve the June 27th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. It's been moved to the second. All its favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Do we have a treasurer's report tonight, Madam Treasurer?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Redpath. Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund of the month of June. The beginning balance is $75,7454. We took in total receipts of $19,486,700, I'm sorry, $750. We had total disbursements in the month of June totaling $25,934,386, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of June at $68,559,818. The ending general fund includes a balance of $19,473,945, which is the June ending balance of the ARPA money. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, I mean daughter, whatever I'm supposed to call you.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted, Mr. Chair?
Second.
All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any questions on the OBM contract report? Hearing none. Say it again?
We haven't gotten anything recently.
Thank you. Are there any presentations?
No.
Next, we'll have ordinances tabled remaining committee. Clerk, will you please read those ordinances?
2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2023-201, 2023-202, 2023-203.
Is there anyone who wished to remove any of those items, these ordinances for committee consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to the next. We'll move to ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, can you please read those ordinances?
CWLP, 2023-298, an ordinance approving a one-year proposal extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $143,010 under proposal number UE20-31 Rental of Crawler for the Dahlman Power Plant, Kamatsu Financial LP for a total amount payable of $510,403.32 for the Office of Public Utilities.
For consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-298 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-299, an ordinance approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $300,000 under contract number UE22-06-3 by Product Hauling for the Dahlman Power Plant, J. Orros Environmental Incorporated, for a total amount payable of $1,300,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there a motion?
Motion for consent, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-299 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-300, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE24-05-29 Outdoor 72.5 KV Circuit Breakers Rebid with Graybar Electric Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed $2,723,675.25 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-300 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-301, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE24-05-30 Outdoor 145 KV Circuit Breakers Rebid with Graybar Electric Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed $2,052,825.38 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-301 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-302, an ordinance authorizing a statement of work with Intergraft Corporation Hexagon's Asset Lifecycle Intelligence Division, Hexagon, in an amount not to exceed $65,000 for upgrades of past cyber integrity software and for remote consulting services for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-302 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Alderman Connelly.
Thank you, Chair. Doug, could you just answer some, just a quick question about this one? So, I understand this is, this is upgrades to our existing systems, or an existing system. Can you just explain kind of what this is actually going to be upgrading?
Well, so this is basically some cybersecurity stuff that we have to do for NERC compliance.
Okay.
So it's basically upgrading to the next level that they have.
And this, this brings us into full compliance with the requirements for?
For this, yes. For this piece, yes.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-303, an ordinance approving a telecommunications fiber capacity license agreement that supersedes various previous agreements with hospital sister's health systems and multiple locations for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved to the second. We send 2023-303 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023-303, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real estate located at 1330 East North Grand Avenue pursuant to the agreed case management order and agreed order vesting title, case number 2023-ED-00002 relating to the usable segment 6A of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Is there a motion on 2023-304?
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. If we send 2023-304 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-305, an ordinance authorizing supplemental reallocation expenses for Kevin Hughes and Diana L. Hughes and their personal property located in a parcel SR0038 at 1332 East North Grand Avenue for an amount not to exceed $22,100 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's moved to the second to send 2023-305 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-306, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Springfield/Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the performance of transportation work under the Unified Planning Work Program beginning July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024 in the amount not to exceed $39,413.71 MFT Section Number 22-00300-00-ES for the Office of Public Works.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-306 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-307, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $39,413.71 may be used for the city's share for planning work outlined in the Technical Work Program as required by the 1962 Federal and Highway Act Stats Springfield Area Transportation Study, MFT Section 23-003-00-00-ES as amended for the Office of Public Works.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-307 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-308, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of right-of-way from CSX Transportation Incorporated located on 11th Streets consisting of PIN 1422.5-409-002 and 14-22.5-409-003 in an amount of $102,500 in estimated closing cost in the amount of $4,000 for a total amount not to exceed $106,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment 6B for the Office of Public Works.
Entertained motion.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-308 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Williams.
I just, can someone just please tell me what, where does this on 11th Street?
Alderman, I've received a briefing on this some time ago. It's in usable segment 6B, but the specific spot I don't have with me. I'd be glad to.
Just get with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-309, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources accepting financial assistance in the amount of $4,000, I'm sorry, $4,896 for Oak Ridge Cemetery to secure the premises for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-309 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Alderman Connelly.
Just want to point out that I'll be present on this. Thank you.
Noted.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business, 2023-310, an ordinance to increase the number of Class AA local licenses by one for Conn's Hospitality Group Incorporated doing business as Trish &amp; Mary's Pub for the business located at 107 West Cook Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-310 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-311, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class B and a decrease in the number of Class C local licenses by one for Casey's Rental Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 2937 located at 1133 West Jefferson Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-311 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-312, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class B and a decrease in the number of Class C local licenses by one for Casey's Rental Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 2250 located at 3961 North Peoria Road.
Entertained motion.
Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Send 2023-312 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-313, an ordinance declaring miscellaneous vehicles as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus property by auction, sold for scrap, donated, or recycled.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-313 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda as a discussion. Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, did we skip 312?
We did not.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
2023-314, an ordinance proposing the approval of business district plan for the proposed South Central Business District Two and fixing a time and place for the public hearing date on and plan and designing the business district.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-314 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-315, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount of $26,998.14 pursuant to change order number two for a total request not to exceed $282,486 under contract number PW23-06-48 with RL Volantines Construction Incorporated for building improvements of the senior services of Central Illinois for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-315 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda. Alderperson Natariano.
Yeah, I just had a question about the change order. Is anyone here to answer? Thank you. So, the doors, were they in the original scope for this project?
They were in the original scope for the project. They thought they could repair them, but once they got into it, they realized it was a total replacement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-316, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of a two-year contract number FM24-03-09 with Ethel Oil Company and Real Coke Incorporated for the purchase of oils and lubricants for the fleet maintenance for the public works from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Entertained motion.
Second.
Entertained motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Been moved to the second. Send 2023-316 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-317, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract number FM24-04-20 with Henson Robinson Company for roof repair at the fleet maintenance facility for an amount not to exceed $159,450.
Move consent.
Second.
Is there, it's been moved to the second. Send 2023-317 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-318, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing a three-year agreement for contract CS24-04-G1 with Allied Waste Transportation Incorporated doing business as Republic Services of Sangamon County to provide waste hauling using single-stream recycling for all departments of the city of Springfield in an amount not to exceed $257,421 for one year.
Move.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Send 2023-318 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Alderperson Connelly.
Yeah, thank you. I just need to know, does this include the recycling from the bins downtown that are located publicly?
I don't believe.
It's for city offices?
It's for city offices.
Okay.
For two cubic yard to eight cubic yard large dumpsters to pick up for city business.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-319, an ordinance authorizing commitment number two to extend the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, ICJIA, grant number 923305 through June 30th, 2025 for authorizing additional funding in the amount of $520,066 for a total amount of $780,099 for the R3 Service Delivery Grant and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $520,066 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent. Second.
It's been moved to the second. Send 2023-319 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-320, an ordinance authorizing additional funds in the amount of $1,4112 to allow $450,000 per fiscal year for a five-year contract with Trustmark Health Benefits to serve as a third-party administrator, TPA, and utilization review management team for the CJ Springfield's Health Insurance Program for the Office of Human Resources.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-320 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-321, an ordinance authorizing additional two-year extension of RFP number HR18-02 with HealthLink to continue to serve as the City of Springfield's Health Insurance Provider Network for March 1st, 2024 through February 28th, 2026 for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Send 2023-321 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-322, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP VM24-04 with Motorparts and Equipment Corporation doing business as Napa Auto Parts for a turnkey parts store operations for an amount not to exceed $5,850,000 from August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2026 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Entertained motion.
Motion for consent.
It's been moved to the second. We send 2023-322 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda. Alderman Rockford.
Tim, Tim Ware, you here?
Yes.
Is this, is this a sole-source bid or is this, does it go out for bid too?
It went out for bid. There was two bidders. One was local, which was Napa, and the other one was an out-of-town bidder.
Okay.
And they were significantly higher.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Now moved, is there any unfinished business come for the committee? Is there any new business come for the committee? Is there citizens to address the committee, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Jim Langfelder.
Please state your name and address for the committee.
Thank you. Jim Langfelder, 2125 Lake Crest Drive, Ward 1, Springfield. Appreciate you letting me speak tonight and give me the opportunity to address you tonight about CWLP power outages. Like each of you expressed at the last city council meeting, as a resident, I too want to extend my thanks and appreciation to the hard work and efforts of the city employees and all others who helped during this very challenging time. I came here tonight to correct misstatements that were made about the previous administration, specifically regarding AMI smart meters. When a resident addressed the city council looking for answers regarding power restoration and yard cleanup from electrical debris, he was not given an estimated timeline. Instead, he was told CWLP, quote, asked for AMI readers which would have expedited our process in the past, and they were not approved, end quote. The fact of the matter is, just like the previous administration pushed for technological advancements like ShotSpotter, license plate readers, traffic preemption equipment, and city works, we push for smart meters and building out CWLP's fiber and electrical grid system. With regards to smart meters, CWLP wanted to do a phased-in approach so electric and water meters could be integrated. As was stated regarding the Environmental Act, the act of the nature was a weather phenomenon not seen since the ice storm, so there was no one to blame. Instead of trying to provide excuses with false statements, residents want and deserve solutions in positive direction for our future. As nature has taught us, time is of the essence. The City of Springfield should expedite the implementation of CWLP smart meters. The initiative can be paid for through CWLP's electric fund. In 2015, the previous administration started with less than six days of cash and built up over 100 days of cash. Another option would be environmental, the environmental rebate fund, which the previous administration and some members of this city council helped establish. If you have not done so, I'd also encourage you to read the Merrill Transition Report, which provides information about some of the initiatives that were in progress and will help move projects forward instead of starting from scratch. As the pandemic has taught us, we don't know what tomorrow will bring. We need to continually assess initiatives and processes to best serve the public and prepare for our future. Thank you to all the city officials for leading in this manner and all the city employees for doing their best to serve others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else?
Yes. Alice Ramey.
You're welcome.
I want to thank CWLP for all the work that they have done during this time of trial and error. Also, everyone that has come in to help put our city back together, which I think has done a very good job in getting things done. I understand they had a lot of complaints, a lot of people not happy with what's going on, but you know, when you have wires that is live and you got broken poles that is live, it's awful hard to get them up in one day or two hours like some people think they can do. I just want to thank the city for the work that they did to get the lights and everything back on as fast as they did. It could have been a lot longer, and that's what I wanted to say. I have one more thing to say. As you know, I'm not happy with popular place at all. I don't care if it was in the Mississippi River as of right now, okay? The houses look like horrible houses. I mean, they look like Monopoly houses that you can play Monopoly on Park Place or Indiana, you know? They're horrible. And whoever passed that ordinance, that whatever you call it, blueprint, didn't look at it very well. They just thought they could do it and get a chance to be on the city council one more year or something. But we need to look at it a lot different, okay? Because it is horrible. And nobody will want to buy those houses after a year or two years or whatever the case may be, within 15 years to buy them. Who would want to live in a Monopoly house? Would you? Although some of the lake houses kind of look like that, okay? You know, I worked for a lady that had a Monopoly house. But I think it's time that we look at how we build these homes for these people that are most to live in. And rooms are like nine by nine. Some of them are awful small. They're not capable of handling the furniture that they want to put in it, you know? Bunk beds is about what wives and husbands should have in that house is bunk beds. And it's not really set up. And if they would listen to the people that have lived there as long as I have and several other people, they would know that the basements leak horrible. And I know that some of the moisture went upstairs, and they say that it didn't bother the walls. Well, somebody is lying because they know they did, because I was in one of them. And I'm sorry if I broke any rules and regulations by walking in there. But that's what I think. I think they need to be all tore down, rebuilt as nice-looking houses. Because we're trying to keep our houses up and get things done for it, to make it look nice and make Springfield look nice for people to come in and buy houses and build their businesses. But if we continue to shortchange them in what they're doing, then we're in trouble because it'll be shortchanged all the time, and more repairs would have to be done every day. And that's not fair to someone's going to put $100,000 in their home or $250,000 or make it handicap acceptable like my house is right now. And I think Roy's been in my house, and he has seen it, and he knows that I want my house to look nice, to take care of the two people that live in it or anybody else that decides to buy it. And it's not fair. Let's don't shortchange our contractors and our people that are out here working each and every day in this hot air. I know how hot it can get. When I was in Vegas, I burnt to a crisp. They would have thought I was as dark as Gregory. That's how dark I get, okay? But I really want everybody to listen to what they say up here and look at what they're talking and every day, make sure it's what you think is qualified work. Thank you very much and have a beautiful night.
Thank you. Any more, Mr. Clerk?
Nope, that's all that's signed out.
Do we have executive session?
No need for executive session.
I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on. I'd like to say Director Fooks and Brown, thank you again for all the hard work your men and everybody's doing. Also to Evans Recycling for keeping their doors open for us through the storm for the cleanup and everything else. So, thanks again.
Alderman Purchase.
Yes, before we leave, I just would like to ask for a moment of silence for the officer of our Springfield Police Department.
Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Oh, Alderman Donahue, sorry, didn't see you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, we would be remiss if we didn't wish our council coordinator a belated happy birthday, his birthday was last Sunday. And I believe the alderwoman, let me see, one, two, three people to my right, I believe your birthday is tomorrow, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, everybody. Anybody else?
I do. I want to apologize for my phone going off.
Okay, thanks.
And Alice wants to apologize for her phone.
I have anything to apologize for?
Now I'll-
Motion to adjourn.